6:00 PM. Today's date is February 16th, 2016. Is it the time for our regularly scheduled board meeting of the county commissioners in Swanee County? Before we get started here this evening, I've asked Commissioner Clyde Fleming to lead us in the invocation and the place of the flag. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come this afternoon thank you for all your blessings that you bestowed upon us. Our Father, we thank you for how you blessed us and how you kept us, and we thank you for your rain, we thank you for your bright sunshine. We thank you, God, for how you brought us this day. We pray, God, that you bless us to take care of county business as you see fit. We pray, God, to have mercy on us. Look on those that are in the audience today. Father, give us strength, give us a mind to do your will. Father, bless our commanding chief. Look on our country, look on our nation as a whole. Father, make a way for us. Father, we call and act these blessings in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming, for leading us in that invocation and placing the flag today.
There comes the rest of the flag.
I'd like to make some general notes before we get started here this evening. If you would like to address the board during the comments and concerns section for the public, please fill out an inquiry card which is located in the lobby and turn it into myself or Mr. Harris or Mr. Musgrove and he'll get it to me so we can consider it during that time of the meeting. Jumping right into our agenda here this evening, we get the approval of the minutes for the February 1st, 2016 regularly scheduled board meeting and also the February 9th, 2016 recessed meeting. Gentlemen, are there any changes or corrections that need to be made to these minutes? Hearing none. Just need a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving into the consent area of our agenda this evening, are there any items that any commissioner would like pulled for individual consideration this evening? Hearing none, I need a motion for approval for items two through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving into the proclamations and presentations section of our agenda, item number nine, presentation of certificate recognizing Swanee County as a 2016 healthy weight community champion. We'll turn our attention to Kerry Waldron and Maggie Evans from the Swanee County Health Department. Mr. Waldron, you have our attention.
Great, thank you Chairman. On behalf of Governor Rick Scott and our State Surgeon General, Dr. John Armstrong, we would like to congratulate Swanee County for being recognized as a 2016 healthiest weight champion community. And what that means is that because of your efforts and your support of our activities here in Swanee County to get healthier, to be more active, policies and procedures that you've put in place with the wellness for your employees as well as for the community, you have been recognized for a healthiest weight community champion. We'd like to thank Mr. Harris and Dr. Jackson for making application through the state. We were honored last year, the city of Live Oak was recognized, and this year Swanee County made application for that, and we had 67 entities in the state that were recognized, and we're real proud that Swanee County is one of those entities. So on behalf of the great state of Florida, I would like to present you with a certificate of a healthy weight community 2016 Swanee County, and I'd impose upon y'all for a photo opportunity so we could send this to the governor and say, hey, we made it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Mrs. Evans, have anything she'd like to add?
This is Ms. Evans who is our healthiest weight coordinator and chronic disease coordinator, and she spearheads our initiatives for our community.
You have anything?
Congratulations, and we appreciate everything that y'all are doing to make the sidewalks more accessible, and we just appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Evans. All right, right now, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to do a photo op as Mr. Waldron has requested with the entire board right in front of the podium here with the seal behind us. We'll come back at 6:10. Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Sometimes these photo ops take a little bit longer, but if it's nobody minds, we'll go ahead and restart our meeting here a little bit earlier than had been announced. Moving on to commissioner items, I did not have any that were requested to be placed on the agenda, but if there's any items that any commissioner would like to add at this time, please do so now. Hearing none, we'll move on to county attorney items. Mr. Pravat, do you have anything you'd like to address the board on?
Not the already scheduled.
Okay. Moving on to general business, item number 11, discuss with possible board action contracts to purchase property adjacent to the judicial annex. We'll turn our attention now to Randy Harris, county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to yield my time to the county attorney who's actually got those contracts and he can speak to those.
Excellent. Appreciate that language. Mr. Pravat?
Thank you. We've completed the negotiations for the two properties that are lying adjacent to the southwest corner of Pine Avenue and Parsley, and we think we've come to an agreement on the prices with the owners. The form of the contract that we will utilize is the contract that y'all approved two meetings ago, so that's the format that we use and fill in the additional terms for the property. The first property that's on the corner, it's the corner lot, is 322 Pine Avenue. We have a negotiated offer of $82,500 for that particular parcel. The next parcel to the north, which is 320 Pine Avenue, which is the Robinson property, we have a negotiated offer of $105,000. Now, included in that, the county will also have to pay the closing costs on it, but all the taxes and stuff will be prorated up through this particular point, you know, whenever we do the closing. Closing is anticipated to be under the contractual terms prior to March 15th, although we think we will be doing it in about 10 days. In addition to just that, though, we have to look at also the properties and the buildings that are on the properties will have to be demolished. At the last meeting, y'all authorized us to negotiate with Cross Environmental to be able to piggyback on to those particular, the contract over here on Nettie Bayston to include those two particular properties. We have negotiated a price with them, and for each of the buildings, it would be $4,280 added on top of the price, you know, for the demolition. So when you look at what we're doing with the Bakers and the Robinson families, that number will also be included in there as part of the total package contract. Okay? Now, Swanee Valley Title is who I've asked to assist with the title work and do the closings on these, and they've completed their initial evaluation of the title on the two properties. And on the Robinson property, there is no problem with it. And like I said, as soon as we get the final paperwork just done, we can close right away on it. As for the Baker property, there's a little glitch in the title work on it, and the problem comes from, not that they don't have title or the Baker family doesn't have title, it's a glitch in the execution of the deed that got it into the two Bakers that now have the property. The glitch is more of a technical thing because of a change in the statute regarding the use of powers of attorney, and that's how this deed was transferred. And so what we need to do is, and we've contacted all of the Jones heirs or Jones Baker heirs, and they are all on board for it, so what it's going to just require us to do is get in the mail, overnight mail, to them, everybody scattered around, an agreement tomorrow, they receive it, turn it around, and send it back to us. Now, when they do that, we'll have the contract, you know, signed by all the particular heirs. Then we have to do a summary administration for Ms. Jones' estate because she did not have a will when she passed away. So the court will have to make a determination of Ms. Jones' heirs so that we have all of them appropriately done and do the summary administration on that. I'll also be sending that paperwork along the same time with the agreements tomorrow. So, again, being able to get it up to them, get it right back to us, we can move forward quickly on the summary administration. Now, the owners for the summary administration part, they will be taking care and handling that particular cost. That's not a cost to the county, but that's a cost to them to make sure that they have marketable title that they can provide to the county. Finally, I've received the surveys from Sherman Friar and Associates on them. I just got them this afternoon. I was on a mediation earlier, but my quick glance at all of them, at the two, do not appear to be any problems that would become title issues, you know, for the county to be able to receive the properties. So, in effect, we're at 82.5 plus the 42.80 on each of the properties. And then for the Robinson property, it would be the 105 plus the 42.80, you know, on that. So what I'm requesting the board to do this evening is to make a motion to approve the contracts to purchase the Baker property or the, if we want to call it right, let's call it the 322 Pine Avenue property for the 82.5 plus the closing costs plus the demolition costs. And I'd like to have them in two separate motions as we move forward. Y'all have any questions about it, if you remember the format of the previous agreements and stuff?
Any questions for the attorney by the board? Only question I have is you made reference to the way that we need to approve it if we decide to do so, and that would be, one, to include the purchase price and the closing cost.
No, but I found that right there for you.
That's fine, but I just want to say for clarity for the board, and then, because I can't make the motion. And then the second would be for, to piggyback on the demolition. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, we've been approved with the piggybacking on there with coming to the agreed price, but I want to include the piggyback in each of the two motions separately, so it's clear there.
Well, I was just, okay, for the two motions for the two purchases, you wanted them to stand alone.
Correct.
Standalone motions.
Yes.
I understand. So just in a summary, if someone wanted to make a motion on this, it would include the, to go ahead and purchase each individual property, which would include the closing cost and also the demolition work, that would need to be stated in your motion. Is there any further discussion or questions about this particular issue?
Mr. Ward has a question in the back.
Oh, come on up, Mr. Ward. Well, come on up.
I just wanted to ask if all the appraisals, the required appraisals have been done and the price has been upheld?
Just for the record, Mr. Ward wanted to know if all the appraisals had been done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the answer to the question is yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anything further? The only other thing I have is designation from where the funds should come from, if someone should so make a motion for that effect. As far as I know, the general fund balance is still somewhere around $600,000, and the renovation construction fund is around, is $1,045,000. Board also has capital outlay reserve in $2.1 million. So that gives you some food for thought.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris?
We actually have the loan that was for the capital improvement plan.
Oh, you can do that, too.
Funds in there, efficient funds exist in there.
If you want to use loan funds to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I was hoping those were the funds we could address.
What's that?
I said, I'd hope that those were the funds that we could address for this particular purpose, yes.
You mean the loan funds?
The loan funds, yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Harris, can you move your microphone? There's folks say they can't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. So we're not going to pay cash, we're just going to use funds from the loan to do this. That's good to know. All I need, folks, is a motion, if you want to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion of approval for 322 Pine Avenue inclusive of the piggyback, the demolition, inclusive of the closing costs. I think that covered.
Yes, sir, that for 322, and then we'll have another motion.
Correct.
For 320, right.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Wainwright. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, gentlemen, we just need a similar thing for the other, what's the other address?
I'll make a motion for 320 Pine Avenue under the same information as far as closing and piggybacking on the demolition.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Sessions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do you have any updates on the Mizels property?
We're anticipating that the initial appraisal will be completed this week. I thought we were going to get it done at the end of last week, ran into a little glitch there, and so it'll be completed by this week, and I'll move forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Pravat. Okay, moving on to item number 12, discuss with possible board action, community development block grant for railroad funding. Again, we'll turn our attention to Randy Harris, county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we discussed this just last week, and I don't have a great deal more to inform you of other than the application. All that paperwork is being rewritten by Mr. Fox to reflect the change in the number of companies that are participating in that grant application. As soon as that's completed, my anticipation is that that paperwork will come back to the board in your next regular meeting for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there any questions of Mr. Harris regarding this issue?
I don't have any.
Nope.
Hearing none, moving on to item number 13, discuss with possible board action, any items related to the state's attorney's office if necessary. Mr. Harris, do you have anything you want to discuss with us?
Just briefly, I want to give you a quick update. Nothing that board needs to take any action on right now, because I think we've done that pretty much for now on, everything that we need to keep moving. But we are talking to the sheriff and talking to the clerk about how to move those storage containers into other locations, some of which have to have electricity to keep climate control inside those. So we're working on that. We'll be scheduling the ground penetrating radar as soon as we have some of those items moved out of the way so that we can conduct those tests. And there, you know, the other issues of clearing the properties and just forging ahead, we're still working on all those items. As far as action items, I don't have any new ones for you today, though.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wainwright?
Would the board be interested, I mean, I'm just spitballing here, would the board be interested in considering the opportunity at this time to extend what exists as the plans now, extend that building an additional, maybe 50 feet to the west, and let that be incorporated into storage now? And that, as the state attorney, if his needs arise for more space 10, 12, 15 years down the road, we can, that space will already exist, but it would take care of these containers out there. I mean, I'm just, is that something that's plausible or no?
I think.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay, drop it, drop it.
It's doable, I mean, we can.
You didn't drop it.
We can make the building longer.
No, that's all right.
The only difficulty is trying to forecast on the floor plan that you have on the state attorney's office was built around documented need and actual space without any waste anywhere.
I know where you're going already, okay.
So if we were to try to forecast on what future need may be, I couldn't begin to even help you with that.
No, that's okay.
Let's just drop it.
Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, moving on to item number 14, additional agenda items. I have none at this point in time. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Hearing none, moving on to item number 15, public concerns and comments. I don't have any cards filled out here tonight for anybody to speak. Moving on, item number 16, administrators' comments and information. You have anything for us?
Yes.
All right, number 17, board members' inquiries, requests, and comments. Commissioner Fleming, you got anything?
No, the only comment that I have, I see where the construction has started, and I saw some of the debris. I want to ask Mr. Harris, what is the timeline probably, week and a half to a week?
In a phone conversation yesterday, I was informed that the company anticipates roughly 10 days.
10 days.
And that was a big part of this issue with negotiating the price on the demo next door on the other side of the building to, so they wouldn't have to remobilize. The idea is to move right on over there and start demolition while they're here.
That's good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Sessions?
I've got nothing.
Nothing? Commissioner Wainwright?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gamble?
I have none either.
Okay. I only have two things. One, I have to appoint an alternate to the canvassing board, and I've decided to appoint Commissioner Clyde Fleming, my vice chair, to serve with me and in my stead if the need arise, and there'll be three opportunities to serve, and during the first time, which would be this upcoming election, I'm going to allow him to stand in for me during the first time, and then I'll handle the, what do you call it, the next cycle, which would be the primary and then the general election. I'll handle both of those. The other thing that I wanted to announce is that Amtrak will be coming through on Friday at 4:00 PM. It's scheduled to come by the train depot at 4:00 PM, and it will slow down. And according to Dr. Jackson, it should have legislators, possibly governors or governors' aides on their stakeholders, so on and so forth, to be inspecting the route, so to speak, and seeing what communities want Amtrak to stop. So the more participation that we have to watch that train come by, the better it will be, according to Dr. Jackson. So 4:00 PM Friday, if you aren't doing anything, come by the train station. Mr. Koch?
John Koch, Swanee County Development Authority. We discussed that issue at the next meeting. I plan to go there to Madison on Friday to be a body and then get back here if I can if I can catch the train. The idea is, is it may be perhaps a move, since Madison doesn't really have a stop, and the one in Lake City is not the most conducive to the public, that it would be better if Live Oak, which has the facilities and the land to expand already and has been in plans and the works for something like that for a long time. So if we can get a large crowd out there to wave flags and things like that, then maybe we can get the stop here where it really belongs, because it's half the distance. Rails like a considerable amount of distance, and Tallahassee to Madison and then to Lake City and to Jacksonville, that would be Tallahassee to Live Oak to Jacksonville, they could cut out two stops. And it's not difficult for Madison and Lake City to come to here. Lake City has an airport. So I would encourage, you know, get your kids and the flags and, you know, I'm going there Friday to Madison, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koch. All right, let's move back up top here. That's all I have. Informational, Commissioner Sessions?
I just thought of something.
Go ahead.
On March, I want to say it's March the 26th, we're having the 50th anniversary of the airport. They're going to have a fly-in. There's going to be a lot going on. There's going to be a military flyover, there's going to be four static displays of military aircraft. There's probably going to be 50 to 60 people flying their personal planes in. There's going to be a lot going on that day, so put that on your calendar, because I think it's going to be a big deal for Live Oak, and it's a possibility that it could be one more thing that we could bring more revenue to the county.
March 26th, you said?
Right. If I'm mistaken, I'll update you. I think that's it.
Greg, you have anything further to add to that? Anything? You got the flyers out there if you need that?
Was that the right date? Was that the right? Thanks.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing none. I just need one thing, gentlemen.
Oh.
We got one time specific item?
There you go.
Back to 6:30.
Slow down.
Well, it's not quite 6:30 yet.
Well, we're out of things to do.
Wait, wait, wait.
You want a recess? Three minutes?
Recession for three minutes?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, we can do three-minute recess, come back at 6:30. Use the bathroom.
Are we going to recess tonight?
Hate to break up the fine fellowship, but the time is 6:30 PM, and we do have one time specific item. At 6:30 PM, as soon as thereafter, the matter can be heard, we'll consider adoption of resolution approving special permit request number SP-16-02-01 by Raul Fernandez and Delentis Lopez to construct eight poultry houses as an intensive agricultural operation on property zone agricultural one. And I'd like to open public hearing at this time. We'll turn our attention now to Ron Meeks, planning and zoning director.
Okay. If there's anyone here in the audience this evening, as well as staff, that anticipates that they might want to speak on this, would you all stand to be sworn, please? All right. You swear or affirm the testimony you'll give in the proceeding before the board this evening will be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
The special permit request that the board has for consideration is special permit number SP-16-02-01. It is a request for a special permit for intensive ag to construct eight poultry houses on subject property located in agricultural one zoning district. The location of this site is in sections 19 and 30, Township 4 South, Range 15 East, as well as Section 25, Township 4 South, Range 14 East. The subject property is located on a 200-acre site, which is accessed off of 188th Place, which is located off of Central Road. Property is a former site of a dairy that is no longer in operation, so there's an existing established land use pattern of intensive ag in the area. The site plan indicates that all the required setbacks for the poultry houses will be met. They require a minimum setback of 300 feet. The site plan indicates that all of those required setbacks are being met. Size of the poultry houses would be 43 by 510. The application has met the LDR requirements for the finding section for special permits. In the ingress and egress, it would be located off 188th Place, which is an existing driveway. The off-street parking is provided for on-site. Refuse areas are provided for on-site in various locations on the existing farm. Utilities and electric and water are existing. Some of them may require upgrade, but are provided for on-site. It's not, buffers, special buffers are not required in the zoning district, however, there are existing buffers of tree lines that exist on the property, as well as the 300-foot setback being met. We probably anticipate a sign being placed at the entrance of the property, which will denote the name and owners of the farm. As I stated before, the required 300-foot setbacks are being met. Comprehensive plan allows for intensive agricultural by special permit. The existing land use pattern is established as agricultural, and subject property was previously used as a dairy operation, as an intensive ag operation. We do not see any impact upon schools, utilities, or streets. No impact to the neighborhood. The established land use pattern of agricultural exists. No impact upon living conditions, traffic, or drainage, and no additional impact on light or air. There are no known impact on property values at this time, and would not have an impact on development of the adjacent properties. And then we do have an increase in production at Pilgrim's Pride, which requires the construction of new poultry houses. We've had previous come before the board, and we still have additional, it'll be coming before the board in the coming month. So the board has a prepared resolution for approval as part of your agenda packets. If the board so chooses to adopt that, and if the board decides to deny that, then the board must state which items the applicant has not met for their approval. At this time, I'll enter the file for the special permit into the record.
Thank you. I'll accept the file along with all of the exhibits in as composite exhibit one.
Thank you, staff. Are there any questions or comments by the board, to staff or to the attorney? Hearing none, I'd like to open public comment at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any further board discussion? Hearing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by- Motion made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. I'd like to close public hearing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Guess that concludes our business this evening unless anybody has anything further. Need one thing.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Commissioner Wainwright, seconded by Commissioner Gamble. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
See you next time.
Check on that.